Okay, we're going to call the order. Thank you all for coming. This is the regular meeting of Point Roberts Committee Advisory Committee. It's a special meeting. Special meeting to complete our agenda. Oh, correct. Yes. This is so correction, this is special meeting of Point Roberts Committee Advisory Committee. For the sole purpose of having interested candidates in applying for the at-large position that is opening next month to introduce themselves to the committee and allow those stakeholders to be, if they're inside, even I'll ask them a few questions. So, we're going to get started right away. The only candidate that I'm aware of that's in the room is Craig Grossman. We're going to start with you, Craig, just if you can introduce yourself and give everybody a little overview of why you'd be the best at-large person.
Yeah, I'll, I'll drop this off. Transferred is the best way to go.
Yeah.
Just as a quick announcement, this is really simple. We've lived there since 2005. Married the same woman for thirty-two years, still live up on me, which is quite a technique. We raised three kids here. Two great kids that have grown up here and gone off to university and to the Navy and then always been Matt and another place. And we're passionate about living here. We're boaters, we're fishermen, we love to explore the island, we love the peaches and parks and all that other things. So, that's, we live here because, because of, because of the community. I've served several terms on Point Roberts Registered Voters Association. The big claim to fame of the Voters Association was that we, uh, uh, inaugurated for a long time and we, and we were the ones who worked with actually pretty quaint. And she's the one who told us about the gas tax and that it appeared that the county didn't collect any of this or that, you know? So, we did a lot of work. We located a lot of, at least got them to admit that it was our money. I don't think anybody's gotten a spending point yet that we're here. Um, my occupation, my, my business, my experience, I'm a bio tech, bio chemistry and stuff. I've got forty-three patents in the US and around the world. I'm an infection prevention specialist. That's, that's what we do is we work with hospitals, medical centers, sports facilities. If we, we, we come up and take out, like, we kill bacteria and viruses. That's really what I've been doing for the last fifteen years. I'm founder and chairman of Allied Bioscience, which is company we started right here. No, but I've been working over our office for the last five years. So, um, and then now I've stepped back from that. I'm president of the GDM Bioscience. Relative experience, I liked it before, before Allied Bioscience. We've done a lot of larger real estate projects, mostly in Colorado. We developed a couple thousand acres. We created special districts. We dealt with everything from, from special districts for water, for sewage, for, we worked with the county with zoning. And spent literally, literally almost five years in the planning development process. So, I'm very, very familiar with a lot of those issues. You know, the other, other agencies, we worked with lots of government agencies. Last several years, we worked with the EPA. We worked with the various government agencies regarding, regarding our business. We worked with, uh, American Tempicals Association, various municipalities around the country. We worked with British Columbia benefit. Our company is both US and Canadian. And so, we worked with UDC and Environment Canada. And so, we have a lot of, a lot of experience, a lot of experience on both sides of the board working with companies. Interesting serving, I'm doing this. Get the kids raised here, families here. We love the place. Built a business here over the last fifteen years. It's our home. We love it. And, uh, I feel like I need to work harder to get it and get back here. What I bring to the table, what I think, is, is the love of our Roberts. I think I've got a very good understanding between the Voters Association and living here as long as we have, of the community of Point Roberts. I think I've got a proven track record as a problem solver. I have expertise in building, participating, contributing, and in creative consensus building processes. And I really believe in that. I think you've got to bring people together. You've got to identify the problems. You have to create a solution and create a plan and stick to the plan. And the last thing is, is that my experience working with government agencies, we've got a lot of, a lot of experience in that area. Certainly not my favorite interview, but, but it is something that I've experienced. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. No, thank you. I'm always, uh, re-inspired and overwhelmed when I see community members volunteer. And this has been my favorite organization to turn on for the last four years. And so, I'm, when I turn over the position, I'm, I'm going to be a little teary-eyed. So, I, I'm glad to hear your passion and interest in joining this board.
That's a big statement for somebody who's given a lot of shine to this.
Thank you. And, okay, so the second candidate that we are aware of, so we're going to call you next, Pam, if you want to introduce yourself to the committee and ask everyone to introduce. Well, see if anyone has any questions for any candidate.
Okay. Well, you're all pretty familiar with me because I've been kicking around for about thirty years in Point Roberts. I have, I think probably a very in-depth feel and understanding for the people here because I'm constantly exposed to the people here. I'm constantly interacting with the people here. I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine. And the first thing I did when I moved here was I founded the Point Roberts Events Council. And that had Henry Rosenfeld was my vice president, and he was a young strapping fifty-five. And John Roberts was on the council and Ben Ben Busker. And over a period of about five years, we had, you won't believe this, we had sixty members on the Point Roberts Events Council. And we did a lot of complaining about how twelve of us did all the work. And it's like, now it'd be like, twelve people doing work would be amazing. So, I moved up there and I, I worked with the Chamber of Commerce. Because we kind of just morphed in with the Chamber of Commerce at that point. And I ran all of the Fourth of July celebrations, the Easter, the Halloween. But I ran Fourth of July from, oh my gosh, eighty-nine till ninety-six, I think. And then I came back in two thousand after a few years being away taking care of my family. And I started up doing it again. And I did it again for a few years. And then I was on the Point Roberts, I was director for the Arts Foundation for twelve years. And I taught Tuesday School right here in this little building for the Lutheran Church. And I was president of Lutheran Church Council. I was president of the Chamber of Commerce for two years. That might not be everything. I don't, I can't remember. I've been a business owner here for the better part of the thirty years. And definitely the last nineteen years here, I've had a store or managed a store here. And that gives me a lot of interaction with people here. And when there's a problem, people come to me, you bet. They come to me immediately. And they're like, what? What's going on? So, it gives me a platform. And it gives me a venue for people to come in and, and discuss things. Because I'm there all the time. So, I've got that to bring to the community. The other thing is that I've had a long time to look at this community, to develop a vision. And the vision that I want to see is a vision that works for everyone. I want to see a vision that promotes business, doesn't encroach on the natural beauty of our lives. And it can happen. It happens in lots of little towns. And I think we have to keep a really, really hard eye on what is happening. You guys have done a good job of this. Keep, keep a lookout to make sure that we're developing in a way that we want to develop. That's the best way for everyone. Things that make our town have a good appearance, make our town have a good appeal for people. Because if you want local people to be here, and you want local people to be able to work here and be able to enjoy being here, you're going to have to give them some infrastructure. And they're going to have to have jobs. And best way to do that is to develop our little town to a really darnly little town. And let tourists come here and empty their wallets and leave. And it's, it's a beautiful thing to do that. So, um, yeah, if anybody has any questions.
The whole question's at the very end. Please, if there's any candidates that we have, but can form their questions out of what they've heard. But again, thank you so much for being considering volunteering. It is a huge commitment and I'm very grateful.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just by an email that came into Prac, these are the only two candidates that we're aware of. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to volunteer to be an at-large position for this board? Please, no. Okay, then I'd like to open up the floor up to the public to ask questions. Mark Roberts, start with you.
So, one question. Well, first of all, I want to thank Linda especially for your service at Prac. And I want to thank all of Prac for organizing this democratic nomination process within the community. In order to submit the community's choice of appointment to Prac, this mirrors how the last at-large rep was nominated and newly appointed by the county executive. But I see, see it sort of institutionalized. This, uh, this approach to filling vacancies is, is harder, harder to, uh, deny it once it's sort of taken through. And I personally think it's the right way to go. So, I have, so my two-part question to both candidates is the following. Do you favor making all five positions on Prac at-large be filled in this manner and eliminating the organizational appointments by voters at their changing? And if so, what would you support allowing Canadians or other non-US residents, on-site US residents to vote in the nomination process and to serve on Prac?
Oh, of course. Um, well, yes, I would support Canadians being able to be on council. Just if, if they're longer residents, they're a big part of Point Roberts. And many of our Canadians, well, John is getting me. I'm, I'm Canadian. We're all kind of a blend. So, um, to restrict it, I don't think it's necessary. And I prefer this format over just the boards format. Just because I think it's, if it was, if there were three hundred people here, it might be so complex and difficult that maybe that wouldn't be a good option. I don't know. But because we are a small community, this is a small group, I think that this having more input is always better.
From my, from my standpoint, and I guess I have a different perspective. Nobody might have this Canadian, but I have lived on both sides of the boards, both sides of the board. I, I am in favor of all the positions being, being elected in the Democratic Party. I think that's a really good idea. I am, however, opposed to, to, to allowing non, non-citizen, non-voters to serve on the, on this particular board. The reason, the reason is simple. Is that, is that you have full-time residents here. And full-time residents here have specific gates. People, people that have, that are part-time residents just, just are not necessarily the same outlook. I've lived in, I've lived in Canada for three years. And even though, even though I felt free to, to make my, my voice heard, I had no expectations. I was a guest living there. And I had really no expectations, even being a property owner, really having any, any direct input. And I understood that. So, so for me, it's, it's pretty straightforward that way. I think there's, there's X amount of people here that can vote. And, um, and it is, it is, and it continues to be as far as I'm concerned apart from the United States. And, and that's, that's just how it works. I think, I think, you know, again, we bought property at other points. We bought property, you know, in the homes, for instance. And it was the same thing, a small community, but we had no, we had no, we bought property, understanding that we were, we had no ability to vote. So, I think it shouldn't be really that situation.
So, if I am going to just add a small clarification, Canadians do serve on this board when they are appointed by the organization that they belong to and have Canadian on the board, such as the Chamber of Commerce or Lady Taxation Association. I think Mark's question was asking if he would be in favor of making all five positions at-large positions.
Well, it's not.
And in that, okay, so you, you got that part right.
I want to clarify also, by the way, in, in saying that, in saying that, I'm not, I have no way, don't feel that, that Canadians, Canadians own property here and that their boards aren't residents. You shouldn't have input in the process. It just comes down to a voting matter. When they're coming, when they're voting for public office, I just don't think they should get that position. But it's not, it's, I live here because I like struggling for, I like.
Okay, that's great. Mark, you have two parts?
That was it.
Oh, okay. Anyone else have a question?
I know it's, we've covered a couple of topics of voting, but we're going to be about the process.
Of course.
Canadians who have, who have property here, who have some residency here or, or if they're a property, can, can vote in this process that we've set up. They just can't run because of county rules. In fact, if we vote five at-large members selected by this process or another process, the current county rules don't seem to allow us to have a Canadian, would not allow us to have a Canadian representative if we're in that center. So, we actually currently have, we're going to have up to three Canadians, the veteran, all three organizations put for Canadian and then. Yeah, so good, good to see, like, two Canadians, two of the organizations put forward Canadians and the county, they can just like them. But if two at-large currently can't be Canadians, all the Canadians can help vote for them in the process that we've come up and have set up. So, it's a little bit of a.
I don't know. It depends on how the board evolves. I mean, over time, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's set up for a specific reason. I've always felt that, in my mind at least, it would evolve into something more, more solid, more, more of a governance body for, for Point Roberts overall. So, I mean, it depends on.
Well, that happens already. It's already less likely that you can honor, you know, at least, at least Canadians that petition, but it's less than.
Can I just clarify, from my perspective, if, if we wanted to get rid of the organizational appointments, try to make all of the Prac members, if they might be more, more democratically chosen, whether, whether that included allowing Canadians or not allowing Canadians, that would require a change in the current ordinance. So, in the process of changing that ordinance, that would be the opportunity to, uh, to allow Canadians, if we, if we wanted.
Why?
And the thing is, it is, it's sort of voting, but it's really, it's, it's voting, it's nominating. It's really not voting. The power still is going to rest with the executive. And it's, it's still advisory. If Prac were to change, change into a, a real town council, I probably would have a different viewpoint. But it's not. And I don't think it ever will be unless we incorporate. So, um, so Prac is advisory. So, under those circumstances, I think considering.
Not to divulge into a question about food destruction, but the only concern, I think the current statute for state ordinance does not allow the county executive to select a non-US citizen registered to vote, even if we change our organizing ordinance. I think so. Anyway, it's interesting to go to a community issue, try to make a change on here as an at-large. I'll, I'll roll that.
Okay. Next question from Louise, for both candidates. What other groups in Point Roberts are involved today?
I'm not directly involved with any of the groups in Point Roberts, other than doing fundraising for all the.
I was going to say, do you mean I have a cookie contest?
I'm involved. It's, it's more personal.
My answer is the same action. So, so what, we, 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 we do any groups causing this school here. I'm not very involved in the organization at this point.
Um, so in that respect, how would you reach out to the community on a regular basis?
Me? I always reach out to the community on a regular basis. I'm always available for people to talk to on a regular basis. And we, through social media, um, and just putting their face, I'm constantly reaching out to the community and I'm constantly getting feedback. So, that's.
I don't think, I think you put it back when I was, when I first joined the Voters Association. There was, there was really, frankly, no communication with the, with anybody except for the show committee. And so, we.
There was barely email.
There was, there was barely, there was email. There's nobody had anybody's email or phone number. And nobody had even a list of people. What we did was, was we actually created a database and, and got to the point where we could, we could get out all the information in certain terms in the community, to all the registered voters around the community. And that was, that was really one of our first things we did. Because, I mean, how can you play yourself? Voters' organization, the voter numbers go on. So, that's, I, I think that's critical, I think. And I think these guys, frankly, I think guys have done a great job of that. I think I get more information about, about this organization than I ever have about any other.
Then just one more question. We just had a situation where no one really knew about the roads being chip sealed and wished that we had had a say, you know, with county as to how that all went down. How do you envision keeping this from happening in the future?
Well, I call the community immediately to get the information, which is. And as a council, if I'm on the committee, that would be something that we would address as a committee. As long as we get the information.
How would you get the, well, the problem is that you're not going to get the information. We found out from council, you don't get anything. You have to go digging for it. This would have been on county.
Well, people came to see right away. I'm like, right to the camera.
But that was too late. Like, this would have been on your folks a year ago.
Oh, right, right.
So, how do you envision being able to keep on top of this stuff prior to it being a last-minute ditch effort trying to do something? Like, we're always behind the eight ball scenes with information from county.
Very attached.
No, I think, I think there are channels from county, of course, would have to be a thing. And maybe a county schedule of what their activities are up here on a regular basis. So, we have some sort of guidelines. Because you know, they're paid by at least in our head now, where they're, um, when they do their budgets. So, I think that would be a way to vote.
And I, and I, sure, some of the news, I think I'm a little more militant, I suppose, when it, when it comes to this thing. But I also was, the minute I saw the road work, I was in front of the county, I was on, on, on what their, what their plans were. And and it was really, really poor communication. I, I think that, I think, I think our community has a right. First of all, we know the budget process takes forever. So, we know that they know way out. I'm going to say, I'm going to say way out next year. I think, I think the community has a right to demand that, that anything related with the community needs to be communicated to us. And if that means, if that means that something, like, I'm just, me speaking on the outside, you got to do enough work. But, but this means that, if you have to, and again, as that helps voters, drive down there, walk in people's offices to find out what's going on. And, and really demand that the county, that's one of the things we, one of the things that I've been most about, since I've lived here, is the erosion of, of services and communication back in the communities that it was a little bit. I mean, at least being, you know, I can tell you, I mean, I'm sure it's the same way. It's not an average, we're paying more money per gap than any of us in the county to live here. I mean, it's services board. We saw, we saw a battle about everything from the WTA vans, you know, when they stop sending the WTA vans here, second school bus in the afternoons, you know, for, for after-school activities. And it's been on and on and on. Comes down to the park with, you know, the dock, small corridor, all of those things. And I, and I just, I'm here tonight practically because I'm at a point where, to where, I'm at a point where I, I want to force the guys in, just work this community in a way that is completely deserved.
Thank you, Louise. Jeff, if you want to ask any questions to the candidates?
So, for all people, how do you feel about having a visioning process that would allow us to, like, have all stakeholders, all the key issues, so that we can instead of reacting to what the county wants, we can proact if we go in and tell them what we want in, in articulated detail. So, instead of, instead of taking what we get, redesign what we want and go after it. How do you feel about being involved in a comprehensive visioning and proaction process?
I agree.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's what the whole purpose of the committee is, is to find out what people want. Find out what our people want. What is, what are the visions that people have for, for here? I know that I have a very similar vision than many people. Some people don't have that same vision that I do, but there's a way of working through it together. So that if somebody has a vision that's more radio-oriented, you know, and some people have a vision that's more hallmark movie, cute little town vision, which is me, um, we actually have talked and have found a way that we can both get what we want. And I think that's what this has got to be, is communication so that we all get what we want. And as much as we can, everybody wants it to be made for. Everybody wants it to be a nice town. Everybody wants more services. We all want that. I think we need to focus on what we want.
Craig, some more on that?
Sure. And generally, Joe is speaking. I, I agree with him. I think, I think, I think that the community, the community, I think it's a common, on a, on a common theme. I mean, since we've been here, there's been lots of ideas and plans and, and, you know, groups. I mean, just the number of groups we have, you know, and the different camps we have on various issues is, is a problem. We need to come together. We need, we need to, we need to, we need, first, we need, we need information. I mean, all, all, anything we do as far as, we're talking about roads, we're talking about trash, I'm like sewer talk, any, anything like that, any, anything, you know, things that are, that are, the way I look at it, I break it down into two different areas. One is, one is public works. One is, one is things that, that we need to keep, you know, safe, that we need to keep the community running. And we need, that has to be, that has to be in kind of one bucket. The second thing is, is when you're talking about economic development plans, and you're talking about, about the future of what this town will look like, and how we drive, how we drive the economy, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a second, a second, a second thought we have to develop and we have to plan and we have to go to. But as far as, as far as I agree, we, we should have, we should have a very strong say in, in, in the way that this town changes and takes shape. And, and again, the basics, first of it, I think we have to focus on getting what we're paying for today. And I think, I think we have to then push for what we want tomorrow. So, any questions? What do you know?
All right. Okay, Jeff. Okay, Pam?
As the chip seal goes, I realize people don't really like the chip seal. And so, kind of the way it goes, cheaper than asphalt. A lot of the roads aren't really structurally sound, paved ways and all kinds of, you know, they're putting a lot of, a two-inch shoulder rail. The county does a poor job either way. You don't have asphalt or chip seal. One of the big problems is these ditches. You just have, you know, having walking trails all the side of the road, and I'm reconstructing these ditches. And it was room for that. The other one I had heartburn, of course, it was dark, like, everywhere. And then a low-bringer, you know, ice cream. And in fact, some friends have donated half a million dollars to build a white house near the, the White House Park. And, and, you know, it's just amazing.
You have the same questions for the candidates?
No.
You know, we bike a lot. And I, and where we live, you know, we, you know, some bikers going by all day long. And I'm sure a lot of them stop and shop at your store and, and all that. And that was a big concern when they did, when they did the chip seal. I was, what is it going to be like for all, for all of our biking business? Because, you know, one of the things we've been, we've been talking about and talking to the county about twelve years ago, fifteen years ago about how, was that, is that, you know, the one thing that this place, we have four, you know, we have all these beautiful parks right here. And we have, we have, we need a transit center. And that's, you know, a lot of bikers get around. And that, frankly, the chip stealing for me would be less of a big problem if there was, if there was like that. I don't mind driving on that as much as I just like riding my bike. my bike.
And do you want to add anything?
Bike paths. We love bike paths. We can talk about bike paths. So many, we love them. They're really expensive. That was the thing.
Yeah, they can, but, but that's, that's a great use of, of, I thought we got sitting there at least, at least part of my, we have sitting there.
Yeah. No, it would be all women. Took in a lighthouse park to me and her.
No, we, we've had people coming over.
Where are those prices? That if we can find a way to do them where they're not so pricey. And then the comment about the lighthouse, that was tragic and heartbreaking. And this is something that, yeah, we all have comments about Waukesha County. We could have a Waukesha County border, they jerked me. Because this is, we have got so many complaints. And that's one of them. They didn't want to pay maintenance on the lighthouse that we already had funds to open it and ready to go to build the lighthouse, the lighthouse park. But if they don't want to do that, I think they should change it to our park. Because the people could.
It seems to me they've done a pretty good job of planning and comparing. I mean, I think they did the best as a fractured, fractured town. And then we don't talk, we don't talk upon voice. So therefore, they can, they can pander to various groups and take everybody in each other's throats. And therefore, it's not a problem. And I, and I truly think that's, that's a community issue that we all have to address and all come together on specific issues. We're not gonna agree on everything. Certainly. But, but we need to come together. We need a pretty little consensus so that we can, we can talk with at least one voice. All those things are of importance.
Well, that's what this community is, the one voice.
The other question that seems to be, that we're obvious, we're on our situation is the majority of the property tax money, they're closing for our county, it's for non-tenant residents. They're basically not citizens. So they're asking for, for property here. The property tax money is going to the county. And we do not have the registered voters to have enough of an impact on the county to get the fair share of the money back. So I guess my question with him is, is how would you rectify, or what should we try to rectify this imbalance? Because it's an obvious imbalance. And it's one that the county is never gonna pay attention to us as long as the Canadians don't have any kind of a say. They're just gonna tip your money and put it most of it on the main off. They have.
I'm happy to speak to it first.
No, why? I don't know what I gotta say. It's so deep, but I don't know.
I totally understand what you're saying. And I, and I, and I, but you're talking, you're talking about an issue that's, that's not going to solve easily. You're, you're never, you're never going to have, I mean, just, just legally speaking, a level, you're never, you're never gonna have a situation where, where you can, I don't think, in my life, I haven't seen a point in time where Canadian landowners provide a say in, in the voting process and publicly receive legally, I think, we, we put in our best point. Well, tough point. The point is, is that, is that we do have seven, I don't know what it is today, around seven hundred or just seven hundred and fifty. You guys know, can you, a little over seven hundred registered voters, and those are, those are people that can have any of that. I, I always felt, and I still feel today, frankly, that we should, that we never, we have taxation by representation. That, that we should have a seat on the, for the state party county, that we should, we should have a seat on council that represents us. As, as do, as possibly other areas in the county that are, that are, that are similar to us, maybe also. We, we right now, we have no direct representation. We, we, again, we're, we're a fractured community. We don't, we don't really, I know that this is the idea of this county, but you guys, this council can't really, they can, they can make recommendations, they can't really affect you, they can't force it in his hand. So, so we need, we need to come up with a way, a creative way to make, to make our voices heard and to make, and to have an impact. And I think one of the certainly one of the ways to do that would be to demand that we have some representation on the county council to start.
We do that. We do that. How, how so?
Because they changed the district structure of Waukesha County. It used to be Point Roberts, who's represented by one of the large members. We are now represented as of January by Ben Ellenbass. We are part of the coastal district.
Right. But, but the coastal district, how many voters are included in the coastal district?
Well, he is representing Point Roberts, Birch Bay, Lane.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So you're talking, we're still seven hundred people. I've, I've probably, I have no idea, thirty thousand. You know, I mean, it's, it's whatever that number is. But that's, and I agree with you. That's a good step in the right direction. That's certainly not, that's certainly not, that's certainly not.
And pretty very soon, every seven hundred people and twenty two pounds. We can't, we can't really expect that.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, Mark. What I'm saying is, is that we're a very unique community. We're a very unique situation.
Well, I think now we actually have an opportunity to say, here, seeing now that we actually have a representative on council, could actually directly speak with, correspond with our representative now that we actually have.
I'm very interested to see how it works. Hopefully, hopefully it'll solve the problem. I mean, I'm, I'm somewhat skeptical. Just the story is, I think it's a great step in the right direction.
Where's Tom back live?
He lives in the border of Ninety-Nine and Birch Bay, living on Southwest Quarter of the intersection. He's the bar host there. He runs this construction business out of there. Okay, he's closed. That's where he's gonna go, his boat's gonna go.
Actually, he was here.
Where, where, where are we here?
He was here.
He was here on candidate day.
He came to the, to the talks, the town hall meetings. He was very concerned.
He was at the meeting at the fire hall and he was at the meeting.
I, I think, I think it's, I, I grow up with a lot of youth.
Well, I think, okay, here's the deal. Here is the deal. When we start looking at having more control of our funds, having more control of what happens here, having our fair share of our tax base, when we look at those things, we're looking at some big things. The immediate big thing would be incorporation. And we, I, we won't know until 2020, when the census happens, whether we will even have that thing here for incorporation. We were pretty darn close last time. Thirteen seven K last time. I think we need fifteen hundred. We might have that fifteen hundred this time. And I've been in communication with the Marston Mass because he's super nice. And they only have fifteen hundred people. They're gonna be similar to ours in many ways. And they've been incorporated since eighteen ninety-eight. And so he said that if we wanted to go for the articles of incorporation, that he would help us. And he would share his infrastructure with us, how they're doing everything. Because it's, it would be a very similar thing. You wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel to do this. So that is something that's out there. But that's out there, I don't know. At least we're out there. And it takes a while to do all of this. And then the other big giant crazy idea is just vote around Waukesha County. That's large. But Ireland County, San Juan County would be more than happy to count Point Roberts. They're much more similar infrastructure on an island, because they're an island. But it would, that's, that's large. And you would have to do things like caliper bit laws here. And you'd have to have a courthouse here. So really, the incorporation would be a more logical, and yet hugely difficult, but doable situation.
I'm wondering on your idea, Pam, could we declare ourselves the People's Republic of Point Roberts?
Right. I'm not supposed to talk about our personal business.
Immediately, we declare war on both United States and also we may even surrender and ask for foreign aid.
And order for Germany.
And order for the, that's actually Finland too, that's very eager.
Okay. Do we have any more questions for the candidates? Pat?
You know what the budget is?
No, I don't know. I don't know. That would be the first thing to find out. But it's a lot of money that they're blowing out here. It is a lot of money.
Ten, ten years ago, I mean, I, we did the numbers ten years ago. So I was doing that, that, with voters. And it was something that was, I thought was a very, very attractive option. And at the time, and at the time, we were, we were paying, and this is, again, I don't know what it looks like today, but I don't, I, I had access to the numbers. But it was, it was roughly, we're paying, of course, five times the average of anybody else in county.
Remember the numbers, correct?
Uh, the, the numbers, the month numbers, it's been a long time. But it was, but it was, I think we were generating at that time. And again, we never got sales tax numbers. Sometimes it's property tax numbers. But we can never get the sales tax numbers, which is interesting. But we were, we were around five million bucks.
That's way more than that now.
Yeah.
That was the night.
That was, that was just property tax, so, so, so.
It was seven, it was seven from the last one.
The primary didn't get its ads. It was asked to fund it and work. And based on what we do, we didn't have all the data to do this.
Right. Right. You need, you need to have all the numbers in. We need to know what the costs are. And we, you look at the county charters, where they, at the time, we had this back ten years ago, so I'm really speaking favoritism. But, you know, what they were, what they were, what they were booking, you know, our, our, our two shares, and the cost of that, that protection was an astronomical amount. And if they're right, if that's the one of the costs, then we would, we wouldn't have the money. But.
Currently, it's two hundred. That's not.
That's what they're booking right now. That's actually lower than it was.
Yeah, they're down to two fifty.
So all those things need to be one. Because the other end of the chain of consequence was that, except for big things for this community and things that, you know, for, for, for instance, I don't throw it out there, I know it's not gonna stay popular, but it'd be, it's actually, it's actually, you know, sewer system. That's, that's something you'd have to wallow in doubt. And you'd have to take care of. And I'm not sure whether a small incorporated area would have the ability to bond, and you guys have been, have you bonded?
There'd be a lot of difference.
The water.
The water.
Right. But it's, whether you're part of Waukesha County, it's all fair, the Waukesha County, there isn't such a thing as small. But I'm saying that I really believe in looking at all the.
No, no, I've entered a lot of it actually, already. Because Birch Bay did a, a big huge study that it's all online. And you can reach through their whole scenario. They decided not to incorporate because their expenses are not, actually, they would have came out in a little bit, but they just felt like it was too much hassle for the two hundred and fifty thousand to come out ahead every single year. Over what it was. But they did not have any coming yet. They had to have this one two coming.
Could you have another question from the gallery for candidates? Go ahead.
My question is, first, just a question, and then you can answer that. I'm kind of concerned about, was it for Point New Look, having some ethical bylaws? And I was wondering what your thoughts on that, that it would be, whether you match them with county council bylaws? Or do you have different ideas about that? And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I have fifty community members that I work at for these speech, that are mostly part of us. And a similar amount to make twenty six themselves. A lot of seats are plucked, they're mostly part of us. But they all contribute to the community, community. And I, I want them represented in product and in county council. And I would, I'd have to try to refuse to how you could represent them or engage with them, just learn that they need, need, so that we have systems that we're, we're working on. Whether we can find a compromise together to make sure that they're, they're concerned as well. Because I understand how the council best try to, to represent them as well from competition. So Mr. Grosten, if you could maybe answer those questions and then we go on.
First, first of all, as far, as far as, I, I'm not, I, I, to be honest with you, I, I am not completely clear on, on what the guidelines are for this organization right now. And my ethical guidelines, I need to follow. I, my personal philosophy is, is, ethics are our most, how we, how we handle ourselves in everyday life. And certainly fiduciary responsibility. I've got a lot of private sector experience to work, and you all, with private and public company, my fiduciary responsibility is quite clear and how that works. I don't think private sector can help you with that. I think, I think you, I think, I think that yes, I think there should be, I think we should, we should be a very straightforward responsibility to people that are, that are, that are reporting. I mean, everybody in Point Roberts is set to a shareholder of this organization through allocation. As far as the Canadians, could we talk a little bit about that? I, I, I think, I think that, you know, and once again, having a voice and, and having discussions and talking about needs and wants from everybody in the community is important. I think everybody should have a voice to do that. My, 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 what my opinion is, is that, is that I, I clearly believe that in Point Roberts, that, that, that the voters are the, are the, have the final say on what happens. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean everybody here lives here because we don't like the interaction between the US and Canada. If you're anti-Canadian, this would be the wrong place for you to live. I mean, it's, 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 you gotta be able to do both. But I, but again, as a, as a, as a big property owner in, in Canada, in Vancouver, in Fawcett, I, I didn't have the expectation that, I can, I can voice my opinion, but I didn't have the expectation that I'd certainly affect change through them.
I just want to mention that a lot of my neighbors are also US people that are part of justice, not just any of us.
Sure.
That there needs need to be addressed to a lot of issues that.
I'm not sure what, what is meant by the bylaws for the certification of the county and how they appear. I, I'm not really, either. Or are they really not different?
There is none. There is, there are developments. We have other high priority issues keep pressing the developments and bylaws for the young road. But they are, they've been in development, they've been at public meetings on more than a dozen occasions at, at just during my tenure. So they are in development. And everyone is welcome to come to all the meetings and share their opinions on the further development of bylaws.
Thank you. I would be really happy to be on the debate that we're doing. But, um, your neighbors, this is my neighbors, this is all our neighbors. All of our neighbors are Canadian, Americans, and part timers and full timers. We have a big mix of people here. And they all need to be included. They all need to be included a hundred percent of the time. I, you know, whether voters have the final say or don't have the final say, of course, they're gonna have the final say because the Canadians can't go to the polls. They can't. But for opinions on how we're going to deal with day to day things, for the opinions of the consensus of the people that will guide this group to steer the county in one direction or another, everyone has to be included. We have to have a hundred percent inclusivity. And so with that in mind, how can we reach out more to those people who are part timers? Maybe we have more meetings in the summer. Maybe we advertise the meetings when they're here to a great, great extent. You know, put a baker's sign and do something that lets them know that they're maybe a male lead.
Those are expensive, but you know. Just, just, I'm gonna interrupt you, but, but have they, have, have Canadian and part timers been excluded in some way?
No, we have, we have one lead this hour exclusively on, that was a suggestion. And it turns out a lot of Canadians are here vacation, not going to meetings. So the meetings are largely not well attended.
Which they bring the mirror.
But there's always ways to entice them. Make, make, yeah, make it more clear, get parts and talk to me, discuss with me. I agree with all that. And that can always discuss, five, eight, four. We're gonna move this along. Ryan, did you have a question for one?
Well, I was gonna say, don't pick off the Canadians, they'll pick their power of waters.
Yeah, exactly. So did you, you said, did you have?
I have a question about, um, hopefully famous and infamous sliver tax. And that's my cue to Mark to explain to them what the sliver tax is. And then having to say what you might do about it. And what Mark, and say a little bit about the efforts today. Sorry, I put you on the spot. But you can keep it better than I can.
Well, it's something that's, I don't know, sort of anyway, I mean, that term sliver, because it was used in a magazine article, it was sliverball. But it's the way they referred to sort of the windfall of, of sales tax revenue that the city of Lane was getting. Because like Point Roberts, they have a lot of cost for the package traffic, this post office and package stores, parcel stores, lots of Canadians shipped to the US adversaries that would use Point Roberts. So it's one of the things on the Tax Fairness Association that we've sort of been popping our head against for a while, continue to do. But it's our view that border towns like Point Roberts. But it's our view that Water County, so Point Roberts, the one that's not incorporated, always comes back to the word the exception, but not incorporated, are generating a lot of, increasingly generating additional sales tax because the state of Washington is increasingly able to tap their, collect the state's sales tax on removal purchase from Amazon or mail order or whatever. And this is nothing new, but it's certainly increased. And the sales tax always includes a local portion, it's eight percent or whatever it is, a certain percent, six or whatever it is goes to state, but the rest goes to the local jurisdiction. In our case, our local jurisdiction is Washington County. We're not incorporated. So they don't disaggregate the, the sales tax that's generated by Water County. It's not, the system's not based on those. We're just in a tax area total with the rest of unincorporated Washington County. Our view is that if we can, we're trying to not figure out how best to estimate for what that sort of marginal revenue is that the county's getting because we're sitting on the border and then try to get county council to agree that a certain portion of that, a hundred percent of who are getting services in the county. But a certain portion of that ought to be pure market for Point Roberts. And the track probably would be the body to make recommendations for how that money would be, would be used, sort of like the asset.
Well, I now think, so, give us a thought about it.
If we ever, if, they, they do know where it comes from because its destination from Amazon, eBay and all the rest of the postal drops, and they know what clicker is Point Roberts. They can't have you do that. They just, they're just.
Well.
Not for anyone.
They, 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 oh, I'm not.
Smoke vendors report to Malupia not by zip code, but by tax area code. And they use that information.
Right, with the, with, and they have, and they have the one because this is the county, and I'm not, all you go back ten years ago, we're looking for the gas. We went in there and, and you know, we literally camped out for days because we were hiding truckloads. They go down there, try to gather the information and especially, this is ten years later, county systems, I'll be accountable for things. You know, the county knows exactly how much money they're giving that market business because they take their, they take their piece from the state, right? So, so if they're taking the piece from the state, they have a way to count it. It's probably down to zip code or something like that. But, but I, this is the same issue we were talking about earlier, we generate a lot of money, we, we don't get our fair share of services back for the dollars we, we collect. And, and that's absolutely, for me, that's a personal, that's a very personal kind of need is that we need to figure out exactly the revenue that Point Roberts generates. And we, and we need to make sure that we get the services returned for that, to work through it. And that's, that's a one, and I, I think that takes, in my, in my experience, it's gonna take, it's gonna take some perseverance and pushback to make that happen. But they know, and they have the ability to, you can't, the way they don't.
Do you want to add anything, Pam?
Well, nobody wants to give back money. And the county really doesn't have to give back money, because they don't have to, because they have a lot of budgets, but. Was the question specifically what you did about?
I think Steve just wanted to react to this idea that you're going to try to get the county to do this.
Oh, I think, I agree completely. You do great. Okay, then we are gonna move on. Penny, there's one more question. This will be the last question from the public. We're gonna move on to the summary and close to this meeting. Thank you, thank you.
As we're rapidly approaching 2020, we're constantly hearing about global climate change, CO2 footprint and whatnot. Here in Point Roberts, we're mandated to pay for garbage and recycling. It, it seems that with all this talk out there of climate change, should we be focusing more on recycling, reducing, reusing, or continue as it is, make it really big for
I think you clearly know where I stand on this. I think extension services on the garbage and extension service. I, I, I made a statement at the meeting the other day that you were at, where I said that I personally, I, I believe we're recyclers, I believe in recycling. But I think, I don't want to be legislative to about, I, I, I don't want, I don't want to legislate about it. I want to be, if I want to, if I want to put up two cans of earth every week, then I think that's directly my prerogative to do so. I hope, it's like smoking. I don't think you're gonna get people to stop smoking by saying cigarettes are now allowed, you're gonna do this, you're gonna fuel the black market, it's gonna sell cigarettes on the table and on the reservations. You can't legislate morality.
No.
But you need to, so you need to do whatever you can. And I think, and you're speaking out about it and people talking about it. I mean, we, we've seen a cultural change. I know that, I know that in my life. It's gone from, the only recycling we've ever did as kids was, we brought back glass bottles, but we got a network model. So it was, so the war was on to recycle models, right? I mean, that was, and that worked, models got recycled. Sandy, Wilwood Cabs, you know, it's, 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 it's that kind of system that I think makes people change their behavior. My business, I'll give you a really good example. Our, our business is, 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 is passive, I don't want to bore anybody with this, but if everybody could simply wash their hands and everybody had the same hygiene practices, you probably wouldn't have infection, maybe the number one killer of people in the world. You wouldn't, right? But, but you can't make people do it, you just can't make people do it. And, and so, so our whole, our whole idea was come up a way of passive, reduce the extension where people, even if everybody didn't wash their hands, we can still reduce infection. Well, you have to change, you have, you have to think outside the box, you have, you have way to, to change their behavior and you have to make that happen. It's, it's, I don't think you can, I don't think you can legislate people in acting specifically, especially in a matter of any group.
I don't have a company that needs infection. But I think that we could do more in areas of, of being, and do more in areas of recycling. And I think that that's something that we can talk about because, once again, you don't have to reinvent the wheel for your, for your town. There are many towns out there who have, or very similar to our towns that have completely different systems or have systems that involve a lot more recycling. For example, I lived on Fashion Island where you would, you could take your recycling in for free if you took your recycling in and they had different bins, they were like containers actually, for the different glasses and plastics and things. And as long as you brought it in, and they were open, you know, frankly, probably five days a week, making it simple for people to do that, that was a viable option. And you know what? We had another advantage because we knew that we should take it in there for free. And so we just did. We act like, I don't know, maybe a garbage stack hole in two weeks because we recycle every kind of different thing. So maybe that's not the answer for here, but the thing is, is it's not a viable one. You know, there is, there is a lot of options to the county. Thank you both for your input and for answering all the questions. Thank you everybody for participating.
One more, one more.
Okay, so let me just do a summary, but this is all about two candidates. Have someone had an array and made it clear tonight. It doesn't preclude other candidates from applying with the Walker County Executive and it's still being appointed by the Walker County Executive. This is an informal process that we are trying to develop and as Mark said, if we can develop it and show that it's a respectful and honorable process, perhaps this future executive and other future executives in the future will start to rely upon us for our recommendations for their appointment. But at this point, we're just wanting to appoint them. Please stay involved with your county, your community members to learn about other potential candidates. And please cast your informal nomination by emailing comments at pointroberts cac.org. We're going to do a tally. Your comments are appreciated, please keep them brief because mostly it's gonna be a tally. This isn't popularity contest because it's still coming down to the Sappal Seduce America Ultimate Acquirer. So does anybody else want to say anything more about this particular process?
I'm sorry, I always put on next word.
Yeah, I just want to discuss the process that they're applying for, because it's in some, in my mind, it's a lot of preliminary vote, it's just fine, it's just before the end of the meeting, some people do the person in one vocal, but, but we asked that the emails identify your, the positive person they're voting for, your own name, and if you're, if one email is coming in on the household, I would personally prefer you to say, I'm cheating a bit, it's not just from me, but I'm assuming it's gonna be the whole household. So there are people that they're, if they're asking you, or if they're asking them to vote for you, to, to put their name and their, and if there are people actually in the household voting, it could be one of you know what to do. And, and their address, or the Point Roberts address, so Canadians are sending in votes, which they can do, whose process, we know they have, they have a location here, could be a mentor, could be a, could be a property owner, but if they have a place here that comes to one of their member bases, and why they'll identify it is not just some person passing through who wants to cast vote. And the goal is to have all the emails in by private conference Thursday, which will be right before our fifteenth.
Mayth.
Probably for the nineteenth. Nineteenth, fifteenth, uh, nineteenth. Looking for a regular meeting on the nineteenth, I don't know if we'll have a chance to power these and announce a meeting at that time, but at least we'll have it in hand, maybe we'll. Now, I just touched on my last special email, just posted notes I said, and I encourage you to, encourage you to vote for you, or vote for anybody that you can pass on that so detailed, we have good input back.
And what's the law update for people who want to apply to be a member? Is that the third person?
You know, I really don't know, but County Executive sent me an invitation to apply for other commission positions and the deadline for that is January seventh. So I just would assume that application deadline for this type of committee position is January seventh.
And when did they pick? And when was it started?
My term expires January thirty-first, so the first meeting, the new at-large position will sit in is February. But of course, we will watch and know that person by January so they can sit in in their formal way and become acclimatized. Okay, Kenny, you have one question before?
Yeah, reading through the application for appointment to Walker County boards and commissions, question eight says, do you or your spouse have a financial interest in or are you an employee, officer, any business or agency that does business with Walker County?
Yeah, and that question gets answered by all of us.
Yeah. And currently, we have a board member on PRCAC.
And we all know that.
And it gives the appearance of conflict, possible conflict of interest. And I strongly suggest whoever gets on the new board, that when these bylaws get looked at, hopefully sooner than later, that we do enforce this and make it so that there is.
It's a question, it's not an information.
Yes, but it is, does give the appearance of conflicts of interest, especially when a former version of this board did not work with the community well enough and the current president, at that time, Jeff Christopher stated that eighty to ninety percent of the people would be unaware of the garbage ordinance and would have to be brought up to speed at a later date. That's not the community advice we board action. Just put it out there.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion. Does anyone else on this board that need for you to be relevant to this meeting? Then I'm gonna, they will most of the time.
And a few about my mind. Not a lot. We should, we should. We didn't really have to.
We also have to polish, polish it, polish it.
Well, we don't have to call a minute for it.
No, no, they've polished them to be totally. I thought this would be my country for a little bit.
How was it on the record?
Regular meeting.
We can, we want to add a next meeting.
Can we do it in the first meeting? Certainly in the nineteenth. Yeah, I just. Well, I would rather not have a meeting on the fourteenth because I've burned dinner on the right fourteen.
If we can put together a document, very probably with, maybe with the fourth, and we can, we can. If we already have a meeting on the fourth, so no, we will not.
Yeah, because it's a very, it's a lot for something for next year.
Well, I would rather not have a meeting on the fourteenth because I've burned dinner on the right fourteen. If we can put together a document, very probably with, maybe with the fourth, and we can, we can. If we already voted on Friday. Okay, so we're gonna put a document together, email to everybody, comment back as quick as possible.
And then we can have it on our register.
We can finalize, we can finalize the document.
Okay.
Yes. Hold on, hold on. You guys, all people.
Well, it takes a lot of time and energy, you know, you've got, you know, you've got